Meeting. This meeting is now being recorded. Councilman Ferguson, would you do the invocation, please?
Thank you all, Father God. We just thank you for this day. We thank you for giving us new mercies and new great daily. Father God, we thank you for protection and for the provisions that you have made for us. And we invite you into this meeting. We ask for your guidance, your peace, wisdom, and wise counsel as we do the business of the city. We ask that you bless every participant and everyone in the city of Glen Arden. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Hello, everyone. Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harry.
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hairston. Uh, Councilwoman Gion.
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Thank you, Vice Woman, Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
Thank you. President Curtis?
Here.
Uh, Councilwoman Hairston?
He was just here.
I know. I'm walking. We have a call.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt an agenda?
So move.
Move by Mr. Harry in second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ferguson. Discussion? All right. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston? Councilwoman Gion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, first item on our agenda is the traffic calming mitigation efforts, uh, presentation by Mr. Darryl Carrington. Mr. Carrington.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, for the record, my name is Darryl Carrington. I'm here on behalf today to introduce uh, Census Gatto USA. Joining me tonight from Census Gatto is their regional sales manager, Ms. Kreiner. Um, at this time and out of the interest of your time, knowing that you have a very long agenda and I don't want to take up too much of your time, I'm gonna just turn it over to Ms. Kreiner and I'll allow her to start her presentation. And uh, just to say again, thank you all for the opportunity to be here with you all this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Kreiner, welcome. You're mute.
Well, there we go. Thank you all so much for the opportunity. Thank you, Darryl, for the introduction. And as he said, we're not going to um, keep you all. I did want to share my screen. So I'll start that screen sharing now. Um, as Mr. Carrington stated, I am the regional um, sales manager for Census Gatto. Um, just a little background, I've had the opportunity to work with the city of Glen Arden um, some years ago, getting the current program set up. Um, so I'm pretty familiar with the automated speed enforcement, especially as it relates to specifically Prince George's County. So I am currently working with Census Gatto. Um, this company was founded um, roughly sixty some odd years ago. They actually developed the first red light camera and the first digital camera in the US. Um, we have installations um, upwards to fifty thousand um, worldwide. Um, so we're not just regional, we are definitely worldwide. We do have offices in Boston, Iowa, Arizona, Florida, Ohio, and now Maryland. And what we do offer to the municipalities is a turnkey system, meaning that there is no upfront cost to the town, there is no out of pocket. This is a buyer violator funded program. Um, we do provide um, the equipment as well as the imaging, the citation processing, the fine collections, as well as customer service. We offer a system that is versatile. It has been proven to be very accurate. And most of all, it is customizable. So we have the pole installation. We have a tripod mounted installation. We have the box, a trailer, and or the equipment can be mounted into a vehicle. Um, this system can monitor both for red light and for speed. So it's one system, it's not multiple cameras everywhere doing, you know, one camera here. What, this one can do both. Um.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, I was, I was just about to say, please stop if you have a question. Yes.
Are you sharing your screen?
You, you're not seeing me?
No.
I'm not sharing? Okay, hold on, let's see. Aw, man. Come on, it's not sharing. How was that? You see it now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Do I need to start over really quick or we, we kind of got the gist of it?
Yeah, the beginning was just to, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. So here is the photo here of the actual cameras that we provide. Um, as I stated, these units can do both red light and speed. Um, here is another installation here. The installations go up fairly quickly. Um, once the pole is installed, it literally takes about an hour or two just to get the cameras up and running. We can enforce across four lanes of traffic. In addition, we are able to provide reporting on vehicle classification. So this is important in some jurisdictions where you need to know or, you know, what type of vehicles are coming through our city. The, our systems can help you with that information. Um, here is the handheld version of the camera. Here is an image um, of the back plate. So it's fairly clear. Um, unlike some competitors, our, our system is pretty robust. Um, as you're familiar with the program currently, once a violation is captured, there is a fourteen day period where the citation needs to be processed and mailed. Um, so it comes to us for the initial processing. Once the plate is cropped, the information is entered that goes to your police department for final approval and citation mailing. Uh, we also have the Zillion Back Office software, which I absolutely love because it gives you so much control over all of your data. So you're not contacting someone to get a report. You could easily log into the system and get whatever data you need from how many citations, how many were approved, how many were rejected, how many were returned. All of that information is right at your fingertips. Um, again, it's customizable. You can provide different um, levels of administration and different views. Um, in the system, we also have our court processing. So if an individual does request a court hearing, that information is in the system also, and it keeps very good records as to what status the citation is in once someone does request a court hearing. So all of that information is right here at your fingertips. Um, the citation um, violations, the sys, this city can determine how many violations you wish to be sent out. Some jurors jurisdictions opt for one or two, others opt for four. So there's a first notice, there could be a second, third, or fourth notice. That's something that is customizable to the city. Uh, all of the correspondence, of course, are handled in our back office. So all of the citations and everything is here in the US is not something that's, you know, farmed out overseas. The citations are printed, mailed, and sent from our Boston location. We also have customer service in-house. So this is not something where the citizens will be speaking to someone overseas. And we're actually in the process of bringing some of this customer service right to Prince George's County. So we're looking to provide jobs and to provide a place for the citizens to go. So you don't have a line of citizens standing in the police department or in the town. Um, the cit, the citations can also be paid for online. Um, as in here, you can also request a court hearing as well. A couple of other um, products that we do offer are parking, um, LPR, as well, and code enforcement. One other great feature about our program is that we are able to process violations out of state. Um, a lot of, if someone is on from the police department, you know that a lot of citations come from individuals going through the city. So it's not necessarily the residents, but there are a lot of out of state plates. So we are able to capture those violators and to send them their citations. So our goal would be to partner with the city. So it's not, we're just coming in to sell your product. We're looking to partner to be a part of the community and to make this a long lasting partnership. All right, and that's it.
Oh, well, great. Thank you, Ms. Kreiner. Uh, one, one thing that um, I, I love to add, that was a great presentation. Some of the things that, um, and I'm sure some of the councilmen and the mayor already knows, but we've had changes in the legislation around traffic enforcement here in the state of Maryland that allows municipalities petition their county governments directly to be able to install traffic uh, devices in areas that are outside of the five hundred foot barrier around schools. And as I'm sure all of you know, and you probably all get emails and calls from your constituents, um, speeding exhibition events, um, kids doing donuts in the middle of the street. This has become uh, not, not just a, a Maryland problem, but it's become a national issue. And there are actually YouTube channels that are now devoted to these types of, uh, these types of contests. Uh, the state of Maryland is trying to be as proactive as possible. Um, I know that several counties, including Prince George's, is adopting the principles of Vision Zero, which is to try to have zero traffic fatalities, pedestrian fatalities by twenty thirty. Um, these are multiple goals. I think that there are also things that we can do around distracted driving as well. And these are all products that Census Gatto um, will have available to you on as a part of a comprehensive safety, public safety package, because this is not about revenue. This is really about public safety. You have kids that are walking across some of these very, very busy streets. I live in Bowie, so I'm right down the street from you all in Glen Arden. We all experienced the same things on MLK, um, with people getting up to sixty, seventy miles an hour regularly on those roads. So again, we, we hope that we could be partners with you. One of the other things that we will do as well is for all the new locations that your residents have identified, that they believe are, are high volume areas. Uh, we will be uh, helping you all with the permitting processes and the like. So we're there every step of the way. And one of the most important things as well is that the folks that will actually be doing the installation will be local MBEs. So we work with a local MBE that will actually hire other MBEs to make sure that we are, we are taking care of the people who live right here in our community. And as Ms. Kreiner said, also, there are, there are plans as we get into more cities here in Prince George's County in particular, to have a dedicated call center where there will be a one stop shop for our residents. So uh, with that, um, I'll, I'll wrap up there and uh, we'll both be more than happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kreiner, uh, I'm sorry. Ms. Uh, Councilwoman Gion.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, just have, I guess, a two-part question. So the second part probably won't matter if you answer the first one in a way that didn't matter. So the question I had was, I know there, I, I believe it was in Washington DC a few years ago, but sometimes there are bad characters that try to take these things, you know, and destroy them or just so they can avoid getting a citation. What level of security do you provide to make sure that the equipment is able to stay there? And that's my first part question. I could tell you what my second part is, just in case. The second part question is if there isn't any and should a bad character do anything to the equipment, will the city be held liable?
Okay. So we have been very fortunate. Um, most of the installations in the city are on a pole. So you'd have to go through quite a bit of trouble to scale that pole to do damage to the camera. I mean, there are individuals that tried to spray paint them, but if there's ever an issue where the camera is out of focus and let's say it was spray painted, we would be aware immediately. And someone would go out and to address that and know that wouldn't be an extra cost to the town. That's something that we would take care of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I might follow up, Councilwoman, that was an excellent question. One of the other things that I think that's really beneficial with working with Census Gatto is that because we were the first camera operators, technology is a really big deal for us. So we are always trying to be the next generation ahead.
Right.
So everything that we develop and when we have a new generation, let's say three years, five years, when we deploy that technology, we deploy it across all seventy countries in which we're in, and we do not charge our existing clients for our new technology. We are happy to deploy that technology at no additional cost whatsoever to, to our folks. So uh, that's, that's very important to know about us and, and our business model, um, and moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, I have a question. Mr. Carrington, or is it Harrington?
It's Carrington.
Carrington. Okay, I'm seeing Carrington Associates. Are you with Censo Gad still, Gadsen, or are you a middleman? Or, or is this a franchise for you?
Uh, thank you very much for the question, Councilwoman. My, uh, I'm Darryl Carrington. I'm the managing director of Carrington Associates. We've been around Prince George's County for over sixteen years. We represent the Prince George's County Council, for example, is one of our other clients. Uh, we are Public Relations and Government Affairs, and Census Gatto USA is one of our clients.
Okay, so you actually work for the, for Prince George's County?
No, ma'am, I work for Darryl Carrington. I, I'm sorry to be, uh, I, I own Carrington Associates LLC. We have been around for over sixteen years. We represent a variety of clients. As an example, I use Prince George's County Government as one of our clients. So is Census Gatto USA. So is Merrilee. So is First Financial, Inc. And our list of clients is on, on the State Ethics Commission list, uh, that's available for anyone's purview.
So we have to go through you to get, use this, to uh, get this, use this company?
Uh, Councilwoman, again, very good question. I'm very happy that you're asking these questions so that we have clear understandings of the nomination. Companies all over America will, will hire representatives such as myself to either help them with legislation as we did over the last couple of years to improve the speed legislation in the state of Maryland, to allow municipalities to be able to have the opportunity to have cap, traffic enforcement cameras in their jurisdictions outside of speed zones, but also in business development areas in terms of introducing them to municipalities such as the city of Glen Arden that has a problem with people driving through coming from either the District of Columbia or from Northern Virginia through your town and creating opportunities for people to be able to work together. But your contract with the town will be directly with Census Gatto USA. If that, if that would answer the question most directly.
Yes, it would. Thank you. I have one other question, and that is, um, so we would have to, the city, the, the city of Glen Arden would have to sit down with Census Gatto to tell them, uh, actually, actually what it is that we are interested in purchasing, purchasing, and then um, the numbers will be drawn up from there.
And Councilwoman, yes, that's, that's exactly. And I, I think that, let me also say that I think it's really important to note that when you have a company that's based out of the country with a US base as well, I think it's a testament to them that they hire people locally, such as myself, who's been in the area for a long time and actually knows the area, understands the character of the area, knows who we need to have at the table as well to be of benefit to us. Because I've lived here in this community for over twenty years myself. So I have seen some companies that come in and they're just in to make money and leave. I have witnessed Census Gatto from afar for a, over a decade or more, and then working with them over the last four or five years. And I found them to be one of those companies that are here for the long term and do make those permanent investments in our communities that we always talk about and have private conversations amongst ourselves about. And here's an opportunity that I believe uh, would be very beneficial, win-win for everyone concerned, and with a outstanding company in which we're bringing rich resources and investments from outside of our community into our community that benefits ourselves. So I like to think of these as incredible win-win situations for us and something that I'm really proud to be a part of and a proud, you know, to, to bring forward. And I, and I'd like to thank Mayor Cross as well for her vision and I'm asking us to, to do the presentation.
I thank you for your explanation, but my question was that we would have to sit down with uh, Census Gatto to determine what it is, we, what products that we need or, and where we need them, like draw up a, 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 a site plan to understand.
Yes, that is correct, uh, Councilwoman Jones. And I will also be a part of the team, just so that, you know, you have people here on the ground that will also help you implement that plan. That was, that was my fuller explanation. But you are absolutely correct. Your contract would be directly with Census Gatto, and you'll sit down with their engineers, uh, their, their back office people. Um, Ms. Kreiner will be here on the ground as well.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, Councilwoman Jones, are there any other questions?
Yes, Mr..
Yeah, Councilman Harry?
Yes, let me ask a question. So um, Census Gatto is based, where the headquarters at?
Boston.
Boston, okay.
Yeah, but I'm the local representative here, so I'm, I'm based out of Owens Mills.
Okay. So how are those units powered? The cameras, how are they powered?
If we do a pole installation, it's through Pepco. If we do a box, for instance, it will be battery powered.
Okay. And Mr. Carrington, you said you had, so how many cameras do you have in Bowie that uses Census Gatto?
No, I live in Bowie, uh, uh, Councilmember. I'm sorry, I, I, I don't, uh, Census Gatto does not have cameras in the city of Bowie present.
Oh, really?
No, we currently have cameras in Mount Rainier and Forest Heights.
Okay, those only two. And where, and where, where do you have those stationed at in, in those communities?
In Forest Heights, they're on two ten.
Uh-huh.
And then in Mount Rainier, they are on, I think it's forty first. There, we have multiple in, in Mount Rainier.
Okay, so you only have, so out of the twenty-six municipalities in Prince George's County, you only have it in two? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Currently.
Okay. And how long have you, how long have you all been in the county?
For about three years now.
Okay.
Yep, for about three years now. I, uh, as I stated when we first started, um, was working with a competitor. I actually came back to work with the municipalities in Prince George's County to bring awareness to this company. So we do have multiple other municipalities that we are in talks with currently.
Okay, I guess my, uh, my other question is this, and I, this is almost along the same lines as Councilwoman Jones. Um, so if we're gonna contract with your company, what do we need Mr. Carrington to be at the table for? I'm trying to figure out what is the relationship here, because it seems like you're, you're, you're installing it, you're gonna give us the guidance, you're gonna give us everything. So I'm, I'm what is, what power would Mr. Carrington play in this whole setup, contract, and everything else?
Contract. You also, oh, I'm sorry.
Right, there.
I, I'd be more than happy to answer. And then thank you for the, uh, for the question, Councilman. Uh, two things. First, let me, uh, if, if I just might. Uh, one of the benefits of Census Gatto is that they are the first company to ever develop this technology. So while they are relatively new to the state of Maryland and Prince George's County in particular, they are in seventy countries around the world, and they were the first company to develop the technology. With respect to my role, um, again, I represent Census Gatto as their government relations, public affairs person. The city of Glen Arden will never pay for me. I am here as a person that assists them with their business development, uh, with understanding legislation, um, working with ordinances and things of that nature. And so my role is working directly for them and for their corporation. Um, and again, I am just here in, in the role of support and as a resource, uh, not as something that is something that you have to pay for.
Okay. Um, so you're saying that we're, the, the, the legislation allows us to petition the county to install cameras along highways within the county. So we'll have to do that on our end. I guess, using our resources, I mean, I'm sure we gotta pass legislation and all of that. Um, so will we get assistance back from you on that?
You will get assistance from me, yes.
And, and, and myself as well, Councilman. That, that's another one of the things that, you know, we, we offer is that uh, you already have some enabling legislation that you've already passed that allows you to have the, the program that you do. You may have to amend it. Um, and we, you know, we more than happy to work with you on that because we have done that with other jurisdictions, not only here in Maryland, but throughout the country. And we're in several states as well throughout the country, um, in multiple different areas. And we'll be more than happy to get you a list of those if you would like to reach out to some of those jurisdictions as well.
Okay, I mean, the ticket, the tickets are no higher than forty dollars. Is that still the same?
Still the same for, for speed and seventy-five for red light, if, if you were to do a red light.
Mm-hmm.
And what about, uh, and the city will get what portion of that?
There's a breakdown. So once we sit down and, and kind of go through it, there's a, a breakdown of what the charges are. The great thing about the program is that the city will never be making, paying a check to Census Gatto. So everything is broken down on a, it's not a percentage basis, but it's a, there's a breakdown that, that we will go through.
Okay.
See what that is.
Now, one of our hotspots is, is seven oh four, and that's a state highway.
Yes.
So can we, can we recoup any revenue from that speed camera? Because before you could not recoup the revenue from a state highway.
Well, that's where the new legislation comes in. Um, because before, I know that the initial issue was there wasn't a school that was close enough in Glen Arden for you all to stake any claims or have a camera there. So with the new legislation that if we are to get a camera there, those funds will go directly to the city.
Um, Councilman Harry, I, I believe the way the legislation is supposed to be implemented is a, we give the municipalities the first right of refusal, but we need to double check that to make sure that that's accurate, because that has been a sticking point for many years in the implementation of these programs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fareed?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. This has been great information. I have a couple of questions that are unrelated to each other, but they, um, they came up throughout your presentation. So I really like the fact that you're looking to establish, um, work for people who live in the city of, uh, or Prince George's County. Do you have a timeline as to when you expect that that call center would be available?
Not at this time, but we'll definitely keep you all abreast. We, we had a great meeting on last week, and again, as Mr. Carrington stated, we are working with the MBE partner to, to bring that to, to life very soon.
Okay. And as it relates to the option for a hearing, if you receive a ticket, how would that work? Because the city of Glen Arden does not have a court system.
So what happens on the ticket and the current tickets, the law is the same. So you do have the right to request a hearing. So what you would do on the citation is you would check that box, you would mail it in. We would then work with the courts to get a court hearing scheduled.
With the county or with the state?
With the county.
Okay. Okay. And then I was, um, hoping to see some metrics around, um, the deterrence factor. I'm, I assume that, you know, your goal is to deter people from getting tickets. So I would like to see from the, um, the cities in Prince George's County, um, what did it look like when you started in terms of the number of tickets? And then after a certain period of time, how many tickets are you still seeing? Um, because it's, it's not really a deterrent if we continue to see the same number of tickets or a, a rise in tickets, right? Because this is not really, these types of things are not really a preventative measure. They're just kind of, you know, checking and tracking. We could still have a speed issue.
So. If, sorry, go ahead, Darryl.
Yeah, i- if I might, yeah, and th- those, that's, those are great questions. And, and certainly, the focus of this is supposed to not be revenue generation, but public safety. And studies have actually shown over the last several years that these programs do in fact work. And I can speak from personal history. Um, as I have received tickets in the District of Columbia and around Prince George's County, I have changed my behavior. Um, it, it, it does change behavior. I, you, you get those tickets and you do slow down. And, and to that point, I want to say this as well. This is not about trying to get your residents and generate revenue off of your residents through these cameras. Because I guarantee you, like me, your residents, once they get one or two of these, they too will change their behavior. And of course, they're also gonna know where the locations are over time. So usually you are getting the folks a, and you know, especially with a town like Glen Arden, when you have folks coming in from the district, folks coming in from Northern Virginia, you're getting people from all over the, all over the area. They're taking shortcuts to try to avoid the Beltway or trying to avoid other, other. They're taking shortcuts to try to avoid the Beltway or trying to avoid other, other areas. And so you're getting a, a, a lot of traffic that you shouldn't maybe ordinarily get. And certainly, they're not abiding by your traffic laws. So I think that they're going to capture more of this. I want to say one other thing, though. As we look at numbers over the last couple of years, please remember today really is almost a two-year anniversary of when we shut Maryland down for COVID. So you're going to be looking at numbers that are dramatically skewed over the last couple of years with respect to red light and traffic and speed enforcement, just because, you know, for myself, I've been working from home mostly. I don't know if I've driven ten thousand miles in the last two years. So I, I think that we're going to have to take some of the numbers that we're looking at through the lens of the pandemic and, and understanding that we may have had less motorists on the road. And so that, that could be a factor, but we certainly will try to get you those numbers as soon as we can put those together.
Now, that's a fair consideration. I think mostly what I'm concerned with is our ability to enforce it, right? Because I think you're right, people who live in this city will know where the traffic lights are, will make sure they slow down. But if we have, um, a lot of through traffic and people are getting tickets and they're just like, what is Glen Arden going to do about it? Then, you know, are we really effective with our, our deterrence measures?
Um, yes, we, and, uh, also, uh, our back in office, as I mentioned, Zillium, and I believe that there's a new generation of Zillium that might actually be in the works, uh, two point O. Um, it's a very robust system. Um, the accuracy, which is also really important, I mean, you're well over ninety-five percent accuracy. So when people receive a citation from us, it, it is because you've either gone through that red light or you have gone twelve miles over the speed limit. You, you're not getting it because we don't like the color of your car, or it was just a malfunction. These are real citations and, uh, that we aren't challenged very often in court on these citations. So, um, uh, you know, we feel very good about that particular feature. Um, in that, you know, we have a very, we have a very responsive call center as well to try to handle it. And as you all know, a lot of the times, you're gonna probably have ninety percent of your problems from one percent of the people who actually get this and want to fight and scream and yell when they may even be wrong, but they will want to yell and scream and, you know, we'll be there to, to take care of that for you.
Okay, so that's good. Thank you. Just one other metric then, based off of this. Can you provide us with metrics of how much you're able to recoup from those tickets? Like what, if you give out a hundred tickets, how many of those tickets actually get paid?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you.
And what, what happens if people don't pay?
Ultimately, they go to collections and you have the option to flag their tags.
And so they won't be able to renew their license?
Right, and then there's a fee that the MVA will charge as well, so it it adds up pretty quickly.
Okay, uh, and, and is there a, um, eh, a late fee? So I know in DC it kind of doubles.
Oh, yeah.
After a certain time.
Oh, yeah, I, I know that, yeah. Yeah, so the, the town would do, the city would determine that the amount of the late fee, but yes, you can most definitely charge a late fee.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Uh, one more question quickly. Will this company be able to, uh, track and help us to collect from a stack of tickets that we have that haven't been paid? Or we just, it, it's moving forward?
It will be moving forward. We would be willing to assist you all with kind of getting that data set up for collections, but we would be going forward, but I would be happy to help you with that. All right, I know you all have some out, a lot of outstanding parking as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, one more question.
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Um, yes, um, you, you said that you can add late fees. I thought the legislation didn't allow for late fees. I thought that forty, forty dollars was the max you can have on a ticket.
No, you can charge a late fee.
And that's in the legislation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right.
Um, I think Mr. Carrington got knocked off.
May have. We can barely hear you.
Okay, well, are there any other questions? Well, Ms. Cryer, we really appreciate you taking the time out to, um, to make this presentation to us. Uh, and we look forward to, uh, receiving the follow-up information that you said that you provide. Uh, Mr. Carrington, though, we cannot hear you. Thank you as well, uh, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Uh-oh. All right. Alrighty, thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank, thank you. I'm sorry about that. My video just came back up. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, all the council people, thank you very much. Sorry about the technical. Sorry about that technical day.
No worries. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next on, uh, the agenda is legislation that is formally being introduced today, uh, that res- uh, those legislation items are, uh, charter resolution, a charter resolution to amend Article Five, City Manager, Section five oh two, uh, authority to amend the line of authority respective to the city manager. Uh, number two is a charter resolution to amend Article Nine, uh, Personnel, Section nine oh one, Authority to Employ Personnel. Uh, another charter resolution, uh, a resolution, oh, a resolution to amend City Council Rule, Section three oh eight. Uh, another resolution to amend the City Council Rule, Section three oh seven, a resolution to accept the American Rescue Plan funding, uh, a resolution to establish a grant program for City of Glen Arden Home Auto Association, a resolution to approve maintenance work for the Veterans Memorial Park, a resolution to declare a city police vehicle as surplus and move sale of the vehicle to the town of Marlowe. And finally, the last instruction is for a resolution authorizing a contract with New Holland Auto Group for the purchase of a Public Works vehicle. These are, um, uh, available online and also be available during the public hearing tomorrow for citizens to comment on them. Uh, they've been posted for for a week now. These were all the ones that we covered in the, uh, works, council work session last week. And so we look forward to your comments, uh, at the public hearing tomorrow, or, you know, if you have time tonight. Uh, but the public hearing is, we have, uh, more opportunity to speak on it. Uh, with that, we move on to administrative reports. Mayor Cross, if you can, uh, present, uh, briefly your, um, mayor's report. And you're mute.
Thank you, Council President. You hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, fantastic. Thank you, Council President. Hello, city councils. Hello to the citizens of Glen Arden and all those in attendance. Uh, thank you so much. This is the mayor's report, uh, covering the timeframe of January the twenty-seventh to February the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have pressed, uh, resolutions to the city council for actions. Those resolutions include the sidewalk contractor selection, uh, the chief of police, um, as well as the resolution for uh, the si- uh, the streets of Glen Arden, uh, Glen Arden Parkway to be included as well as, uh, the financial credit card policy use. Uh, with this, uh, particular resolution, I understand the treasurer does have his financial credit card, so at which case we can start to utilize that appropriately. Uh, the mayor's office has supported, uh, field calls this particular month. Uh, actions have been taken, uh, with the Prince George's County, uh, Hope and Action Task Force. Uh, mayor has been, uh, accepted into this task force, uh, handpicked by county executive also Brooks to formulate ways in which our community, uh, as well as our city and district and, uh, across this county can address the violence that has been occurring as well as the youth disenfranchisement. So this task, uh, force was actually formed, it has twenty members associated and, uh, as well as community grassroots organizations who are all binding together to come to a county-wide solution. Uh, we did have a resident that needed to have his driveway extended. We've had some extensive talks about this residence on Leslie Avenue. Uh, there has been legislation put in place, uh, from the former council uh, that essentially says that there is an enforcement, if you will, of two cars permitted on the streets per uh, residents there on Leslie. So that is something that needs to be, and as far as our, uh, restrictions impose. Uh, we do thank Darryl Carrington, um, and Sinjay for coming on board and talking to the traffic calming measures. That was one of our key points, so we thank the council for accepting that. Uh, the Maryland Black Mayor's Meeting, uh, was also one of the key meetings that I was able to attend. Uh, there's been a change of leadership, uh, in that particular role. And we will have the Maryland Black Mayors taking a bigger stance, if you will, in the Maryland Municipal Association as well as the Maryland Municipal League. Uh, the Black History Month program, uh, that went forth included, uh, participants from, um, Kingdom Clariton Call, uh, where actually was able to speak to, uh, residents across our community, uh, across the state, uh, residents from, uh, actually, uh, people from Cameroon, Uganda, South Africa as well. So that was a pretty interesting, uh, invite and was very happy to, uh, participate in that African-American history, uh, program uh, to include also having a participation, if you will, of the, uh, hundred and five voices of, uh, which are all of the historical black, uh, colleges joined together to actually join together and bring one unified voice and one sound. We were able to get, uh, information, uh, from Prince George's, which would allowed us to actually televise programming uh, onto Tuskegee Airmen and also, uh, provide a motorcade for peace uh, and also encouraging the registration for voters, uh, a- a- as we participated in that on the twenty-first of, uh, February for President's Day. Uh, we do have a wonderful opportunity and we have reached out to local schools to participate if I were mayor. Uh, this allows our fourth graders across our elementary schools to be able to write to uh, the things that, uh, is seen in the eyes of a child in our community and make recommendations. Uh, this will go before the Maryland Municipal League and will have an opportunity for the school to actually seize recognition at the state level. We have socialized municipal survey, which came out of Prince George's County. Uh, and that came from Mr. Nice Ross. So citizens, uh, it is online. Please take an opportunity to fill out that survey, because what that does is it talks to the county directly on things that are good and things that you would like to see improved. So that you will be able to find on our city's website, so please take an opportunity, and a lot of you have. And I want to say thank you. I did check the numbers today, uh, did fill out that survey. It allows the county to do better as a whole collectively across our cities. We swore in five new police officers, including the city manager, Ms. Consuela Barbara. Those police officers, uh, successfully took the oath on, uh, February the seventh. We do have HR actions that are in place for Maintenance Tech One as well. Uh, HR actions are in place for the, uh, Director of Public Works. We have reviewed our web media specialist, RFP, and we are making actions to move towards uh, actually securing a television studio manager, which is a good thing, which will allow us to actually come back uh, when it is time into session and have, uh, the proper persons in place. Uh, we are also looking at the FY twenty-three budget and making the necessary adjustments to ensure that our city has the financial stability that it needs to actually indeed move the mission forward. And one of those is that television studio, which is currently in extreme disarray. We have taken an effort to, um, every second Wednesday as mayor to bring forth the community forums, community town halls. Uh, we kicked off the first community town hall with the annual report to the city council and citizens. Uh, we have been utilizing that town hall as an opportunity to bring forth community forums uh, from across this, uh, city as well as the district and throughout the county where there is, uh, hot ticket items that would bring, uh, good information and fidelity to some of the changes that are happening on the ground here in the county. Uh, so we want to continue to build upon that, uh, new creation. I think it's a good thing, uh, which allows us some favorable feedback and being able to escalate, uh, concerns from citizens in record time. You did receive your postcard for this quarter. Uh, we will continue to press that postcard. Uh, you received four throughout the year, first, second, third and fourth quarter. Uh, citizens, this postcard is critical because it allows you to stay connected to the things that are happening in the city and also for you to be able to participate. One of the key things that we've noticed, uh, relative to mental health and wellness in our community is since COVID nineteen put us in the house, locked us down for almost two years, uh, we need to bring our citizens back together safely. Uh, so we have been doing a lot of things on Zoom, but now as we find that a lot of our citizens are getting their vaccination and the state is relaxing, a lot of the COVID restrictions, uh, we are finding ways to safely bring our community back together. Every, uh, February, uh, every Thursday in February, we did launch the Black History Movies After Dark series. Uh, that was well received, uh, by the Glen Arden Community Center team, and they are interested in continuing to partner with the city in that respect. Uh, apparently they do have, uh, Friday night basketball and they actually do have opportunities where children are there for various events and they would like to start partnering a little bit more during the summer, uh, particularly when it's warmer outside and build upon that, uh, creation of movies, uh, after dark. And we're also looking at building, uh, opportunities for the citizens to come together by having, uh, jazz festivals on the green. Uh, we're also looking at building community gardens, uh, and that will allow, uh, the citizens to actually have meeting points. It is critical that we understand as community, uh, being together is a key component of growing together. We are definitely proud that many repairs are being taken across the city. But there is more repairs that have to be taken. And I am very thankful for citizens and also for our public works, for our city manager, uh, for taking immediate action when things are brought to, uh, light that needs to be done. Like if there's holes in our highways that are dangerously, uh, causing people to have accidents or, you know, issues with, uh, some of our signage. Uh, we had a stop sign that went down. Uh, these things are very important, so please, please, sir, ma'am, call in to, uh, the city hall. Uh, make sure that Ms. Michelle Cheek, which is our administrative assistant, uh, receives that information because she is actually putting together metrics for us so that we can start to identify where our hot spots are, particularly as it pertains to our roads, as it pertains to, you know, our facilities in general. We are definitely, um, looking at taking it to the next level. Uh, when our sidewalk contract is actually approved through this resolution, uh, we have identified several roads that are in need of repair uh, because the trees are such have grown up and caused the sidewalk to break or because of, uh, water runoff has caused, you know, gaps in the sidewalk, uh, which is causing a tripping hazard in many of our, our city streets, uh, sidewalks. So this is something that we're really actually looking forward to this resolution, uh, getting passed because that will allow us to, you know, take a sequential step and move forward in, in repairing that, as well as the, um, ADA compliant sidewalks, which is another portion of the extended contract. Uh, the American Rescue Plan funds, uh, we, uh, still need to push that survey out to the citizens. Um, we are happy to see that, you know, the ability to use the money is one of those items of topic for the council today. There are several, uh, events that will come up and I won't go through those, but just please, sir, please, ma'am, uh, when you get your quarterly postcard, then you'll be able to take a look at that. One thing I will highlight that's coming up really quick here is, um, March thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty, this is going to be the city of Glen Arden. Uh, I partnered with, uh, the Maryland Park Police and they're actually I partnered with the Maryland Park Police and they're actually sponsoring a blood drive there with the American Red Cross. I donated blood in January and I was very shocked that the blood was actually used in less than a month in DC. So one of the things that I can appreciate about the American Red Cross and what they're doing is they're giving you a really a record by record of where your donation is being used. So that was very, very interesting for me to hear. The Maryland Municipal Association will have its winter's conference and that's going to be March thirty first through April the first in Annapolis. We will go there as mayor, participate in the workshops and roundtables and dialogue with key state officials there in Annapolis. As far as the various local spotlights, inside of my report, you'll see various legislation that I believe is key, not only for our city, but across this county and at the state level. Please take an opportunity, sir, ma'am, to look at some of those legislations. For example, one is the legalization of cannabis. There is a vote for that, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And also one that I thought was pretty key, which is the ban on ghost guns. And that's the unserialized firearms. And even here in the city of Glen Arden, we have had a couple of random traffic stops that ended up with, you know, a heavy load cache, if you will, of firearms and other nefarious drugs and such being recovered. So good on Glen Arden Police Department for their ability to continue to maintain us as the third safest city in the state of Maryland. But that is a key legislation that is coming out in this particular House bill. So please take a look at the bills that are there at the end of the report. And with that, Council President, that concludes the mayoral report. We do have the report for the various other departments. Did you want me to go through those, sir?
I was gonna give the opportunity for Mr. Stewart and Ms. Barbara to speak. But just wanted to highlight again your mayoral address where they could come learn more about how the city is moving forward under the mayor's plan and perhaps more of this in the city report. And this has been online for a while. So just, you know, I'm pretty sure citizens have read it and probably will ask questions at the end when it's time for citizens' comments. So thank you, Mayor Cross. Sorry, lost my place. Treasure Report, I'm sorry, City Manager's Report, Ms. Barbara.
Thank you, President Curtis. I apologize, but I was going to defer to the mayor to go through that. I wasn't aware that it would be my opportunity to review that at this point.
I can take care.
Okay, Mayor Cross.
Okay. So.
And please be brief because they don't have as much time as you do, so.
Roger, sir. City Manager's Report, the city manager is meeting actively with the treasurer to plan and coordinate our budget for the upcoming FY twenty three. It is really coming together well. So kudos to city manager Barbara, as well as Dean, our new treasurer, for the work that they're doing across the administration as well, pulling the council together. And we're very excited that we'll be able to push this budget well ahead of schedule and have it close by the timeline, first of July. We are processing employee additional forms. We are preparing to do our quarterly assessment on each one of the administrative staff. And we are following up with various questions and concerns that are coming across the city. One of the things that's key that's coming across the city is relative to how we are conducting our code enforcement. We did conduct interviews for part-time code enforcing officer, as you all are aware. Our full-time code enforcement officer has departed the city. So we are looking at interviews for that as well as a part-time code enforcement officer. We are conducting maintenance tech interviews as well as conducting research for the electronic vehicle, which is approved in the budget. So with that, we are also looking at buses. So the county actually has a agenda item that they're pushing, which will put grants towards electronic buses. So this is something that we want to make sure that if it is an option made for our city, that we are able to update Mr. Bates Moore's bus. We have coordinated the request for COVID nineteen mask and indeed on last week was able to do the personal protective equipment handout. We want to thank the city council members that came out, that all the citizens that came out and actually did acquire their mask as well as their hand sanitizers and extra gloves. These things are so critical for us to protect our community. And I just wanted to give a major hats out to our executive assistant, Jordan McLong, as well as the city manager for making that happen. It was a successful event. The city manager did attend a meeting with the county. The BRIC meeting was able to also attend a meeting with representatives of the REC Center. As we're building that community engagement with the REC Center, we have gotten some major ground made over the last month with the Glen Arden Community Center as well as with Calvin Diggle, which is the regional director, who is very excited about the work that Glen Arden is planning to put on the ground as far as citizen engagement. We are going through the various files of the office and we're also preparing for our student work help that will be able to help us this summer. And the good thing about that is we'll get the files actually sorted and categorized like real record management should be. So this is a good news story. Shall I go through the chief's report, sir?
No, I believe Chief Jackson can speak to that.
Thank you. That concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you. Chief Jackson?
Yes, good evening. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
If there's anything on the report that anyone have any questions about, feel free to ask. I know everybody has a copy of it. Apologize for missing the last meeting, but I wasn't giving you the ID or the passcode to get into the meeting.
Okay. I did have a question as it relates to the traffic pattern for Costco. And I know this is special times, but now the line has reached all the way back to Woodmore at Glen Arden. And I noticed that if residents of Woodmore Glen Arden tried to come out of the last Turner, Turner.
The roundabout.
Circle, roundabout, thank you. The roundabout that they can't get through. What's the traffic pattern for that?
Good question. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to meet with the manager of Costco, Ms. Teresa. And I informed her that I would have to have an officer up there to monitor that because we know that they were blocking the roadways into the community and as well as coming in, entering into the Rio Coscos. So now we have officer at the roundabout. So when that traffic line gets backed up to the last sign, we block the road so that all the traffic will go down towards Costco and make a U-turn and come back or even continue on into the shopping center.
Okay.
And that's from, we do that from eleven in the morning until it's seven at night.
Okay.
And that's Monday, that's Sunday through Sunday.
All right, thank you. We're about to, you and I were about to have an encounter. You didn't see me coming. I was coming around that roundabout, didn't see your car in the middle of the street, so I had to go the other way. But I figured it was that way. It was just that the residents, the residents at the residents at Woodmore at Glen Arden weren't made aware of how that would work out. So maybe a blast can go out. I know these are challenging times. The gas is skyrocketing and, you know, the panic to get gas now because of the price increase and later, you know, has caused people to, more and more people to go to the gas tank. So maybe some way we could, you know, let just inform our citizens who live in that area could be helpful.
All right, can we put something on our website? And reference to that?
Yeah, I'm sure we can. We can, I can have Ms. Lewis work with Ms. Ward to put something on the website. And we could also inform the HOA of Woodmore at Glen Arden so that they can make the homeowners and condo, well, homeowners aware.
Okay.
All right. Well, I don't hear any other questions. So thank you, Agent Chief Jackson.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stewart, the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. City council members, Mayor Cross. This is the city's treasurer report.
Sorry, sorry, do you need to share your screen?
Can you do it for me, please?
I'll have to pull it up. Give me one second.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you. So go to the report page. Thank you. So this is the treasurer's report, the given you the report as of January thirty first, twenty twenty two. Total revenues up through to January was six million, three sixty-four thousand, six twelve. And expenses were two million, four forty-nine oh seven. These activities resulted in fiscal year to month revenue exceeding expenses of three million, nine twenty-three thousand, seven oh five. The city at this time continued to receive funds from real property tax. It is going down, but I could say for January, January had the second highest amount received from real estate taxes with amount of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, three seventy-four. In subsequent months, which is February twenty twenty-two, we realized that the city collected twenty-six thousand, five seventy-one, which was a significant drop off of the amounts received. You could go like up to the analysis for revenue, yes. So at this point, the general fund revenue of three million, eight ninety-four thousand was received and it was generated by having local taxes of three million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, which represented approximately eighty-eight percent. License and permits, thirty-four thousand, five eighty-three, which approximately ninety percent, point nine percent. The state grant of ninety-one thousand, nine sixty-two, which was approximately two percent. You had service charges, which includes streetlight and special assessment of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight seventy-five, approximately seven percent. And other financial sources of seventy-seven thousand, three twenty, which approximately two percent. The following is the funds that are operated by the city and it compared to the grant. So if you go back up to grant to general fund revenue. So general fund revenue was budgeted at four million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand. The current amount received or actual amount received was three million, eight hundred and twenty, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, which represented approximately eighty-two percent. General fund expenses. We budgeted four million, eight twenty-five thousand, five fifty. And to date, we have used actually two million, two eighty-two thousand, which is approximately forty-seven percent. Special fund or special revenue. Special revenue was budgeted at two million, two fifty-one thousand. The current amount actually received was two million, two twenty-four thousand, seven sixty-six, which is approximately ninety-nine percent. Special revenue expenses budgeted six to six thousand, seven ninety-six. The actual spending was eighteen thousand, two sixty-five, approximately twenty-seven percent. Capital project fund, the revenues were budgeted at one million, six seventy-five thousand, seven seventy-five. Actual was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one forty-four, approximately thirteen percent. Capital project expenses budgeted at nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one eleven. Amount actually spent, one hundred thousand, which is approximately ten percent. The goal room revenue budgeted was one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. Current actual received was two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred, approximately sixteen percent. Goal room expenses budgeted at one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five ninety-nine. Actual expenses was thirty-three thousand, thirty-nine thousand, nine forty-six, approximately twenty-nine percent. A cash update would see that the city cash position remains sufficient to pay all outstanding bills as they become due. Current bank balances, or I should say bank balances, as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, the main operating account had nine million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. forbearance had seven thousand, seventy-eight. Goal room had one hundred and thirteen thousand, one forty-nine. The block grant had four thousand. The cable PEG grant was three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight sixty-five. The four-year, our fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit was complete. The auditors met with the council and have done their presentation. And I know that there will be another presentation that will be done for the citizens in general. I must note too that a copy of the audit was sent to the state legislative auditors for filing. And that and the report for the treasurer's report. And I should also add too that I hope everyone feel confident and comfortable with the graphs and the pie charts that I have put in. As much as possible, I'm gonna try to give you that kind of visual expression of what our finances are because I understand with the whole lot of the numbers that we used to be sending out, I think the graphs does give a more picturesque idea of what. I think the graph does give a more uh picturesque idea of what's happening in the city. Um, so therefore that ends the report for the audit, the the treasurer's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Stewart. Uh, now we'll open it up for uh citizens comments. If you, any citizen wishes to speak, you can raise your hand. Uh, and if you do not know how to raise your hand, uh, you can unmute yourself and Miss Carolyn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I got some questions and I would appreciate everybody just wait till I finish and respond, okay? Today, today, there was no package for me to pick up. So I don't have, I didn't have agenda. So I don't know what was, I couldn't follow you. Uh, on May the seventh, the council did an illegal voting. You cannot vote at a work section. Uh, after listening to the discussion. What is that noise? After listening to the discussion, I, it led me to believe that there was some misunderstanding about the nature of the work section. A work sec, I'm explaining to you what a work section, what a regular meeting is, a special meeting and a public hearing is. A work section is you review and discuss the legislation from the public hearing. A regular meeting is you vote on legislation that was discussed and the work section. A special meeting is a piece of legislation that is of urgency. A, a public hearing is. A forthcoming legislation that allows citizens to comment before being discussed at a work section. Last, last month, last meeting, uh, they said that the president should have the discretion over. The number of time where person should present himself. And I don't think the president should have that discussion because of the president is biased towards some citizens. Section three oh eight of the peaceful legislation, uh, uh, I believe it has to deal with council rules. My opinion of that is the council is trying to eliminate the number of meetings that the council should attend to. And, and taking away the citizen right to have a say on forthcoming new legislation. I personally feel that if these council people is unable to fill their responsibility, they don't have to attend those meetings or they could resign. Um, you having so many meetings now because you're not following the charter. Now, I believe a month ago, last month. Uh, a council now has, I made a statement that they had talked with M and L, Mister Peck. About uh combining a public hand and a regular meeting together. I contacted M and L, talking Mister Peck. And he would slightly remember the conversation. And I informed Mister Peck that a public head is a part of the city charter. He stated to me that if the public hand is a part of the city charter, they should be required to follow the, the, the charter. So y'all need to follow the charter when it comes down to the public hand. On March the seventh also, I kept hearing this beep the noise. And they still doing the same thing tonight. I don't know where it's coming from, but it's very annoying. And nothing has been said about that. Uh, in reference to. Uh, this, uh, Mrs. Cross report. Uh, I, I would like to know where this garden is going to be located. And I also like to know who's going to be responsible for keeping this garden. Because the city had spoken, the resident has spoken before, they, they do not want a garden in the city of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Miss Smallwood. Mister Stevens.
Stevenson, uh, thank you.
I'm sorry, Stevenson, sorry, I apologize.
It's okay. I don't understand. Um, it, it apparently it's a common uh last name, but it's okay. Um, but thank you so much. Uh, uh, good evening, uh, council president, uh, council and madam mayor. Uh, thank you so much for yielding the time. I just want to send out a great apology to the city. Um, we were not able to uh carry on with our mental health event that the city uh, did agree to partner with me on this past weekend due to uh the crazy weather that we have in our lovely state of Maryland. Uh, but I did want to alert the city that we are planning on setting a new date and time uh, for the mental health event. I just wanted you all to know that. Uh, when we do send out that new information, I would love all the city council members um, as well as the mayor to uh continue to spread uh that information out to uh city residents. Because as you all know, mental health stressors right now, even though it looks like uh the end of COVID may be upon us. Um, you all know that mental health stressors um impact us every day. Uh, so with that being said, um, I would uh like to thank you all for the support that you all have given uh, myself as well as the partners of this event, including the Prince George County N double A C P, uh, the National Association for Mental Illness and other partners, including um the other municipalities of District Twenty Four. Uh, but I, I did want to update you all on that and um apologize for any inconvenience that it may have had on any plans that you all had to attend the event, but the show will go on. Thank you so much, uh, Mister President. I yield back.
Thank you. Mister Stevenson, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from citizens? Uh, Mister Jesse Huff Junior.
Good evening, uh, council president. Uh, I do, I, it's more of a concern, two concerns. I didn't notice the same thing that Miss Smallwood said, that I voted in a work session. And I had, and I did have a question. I thought that was illegal. And then another concern I had, I had mentioned this before about putting a four way stop sign at Glen Arden Parkway and Reed Street. And I just want to know that anybody consider that idea or take that idea to any soaps. That's all I had.
Thank you. Uh, as it relates to the vote, what vote are you talking about? Mister Jesse Hap Junior?
Yes, I just watched the uh YouTube video, the latest video, and I think it was from last week. And they say on the YouTube, they say work session. But I thought the work session, you couldn't vote, you can't do no voting in a work session. The way I thought the work session was just a meeting of the council that the citizens, we, we can't speak at.
Yeah, uh, the question is what vote are you referring to? I don't recall a vote being taken in the work session.
I will have to look back at it and I can email you the exact time on the, the video that I'm talking about.
Yeah, it, it's, it's important that, you know, I mean, it's important that, you know, when we speak on things, it's, it's actually factual because you know, now everybody thinks that we had a vote and we actually did not have a vote. Uh, but if you can find it, yeah, welcome if I'm wrong, uh, for you to uh pinpoint where that is. And a vote is different from uh consensus. Census is allowed, uh, and that's not an official vote. Uh. As it relates to, I'm sorry, it was one more thing you had about the forward stop signs. You sent, you sent the email out to the council about this?
Yes, and I had said it on a meeting before, uh, in one of our past meetings before. This is about two months ago, I had mentioned it. About turning uh Glen Arden Parkway and Reed Street into a four way stop sign. Before we stop.
Have you received uh the email? Mayor Cross.
Don't recall right now, uh, council president, but I will take a look at that four way stop at Glen Arden Parkway and Reed Street. I also will make the council aware that there was a complaint that came in last week relative to the turn signal off of Bright Seat Road. So when you're turning left, coming on to Glen Arden Parkway, uh, there at the library, literally the turn signal is about two seconds long. So when it turns green, you better hit the gas because you're not going to get across the intersection. So we've got two areas to take a look at, council president.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Are there any other questions? From citizens?
Council president, if I may, I'm sorry, I think I owe um former councilwoman Smallwood an answer. On the, the garden, uh, the community garden is not uh something that the city of Glen Arden will control. In fact, it's a part of Maryland Park and Planning. Uh, and that's something that they have been discussing for a while and it was an energized event uh, that I just got wind of and I, I know that several of our citizens have actually asked for it. Uh, one in particular has volunteered to actually shepherd that particular garden and, and, and maintain it. Uh, Councilman Herring did bring up on last week, the, uh, the last meeting about uh rodents and such. And then that's something that would have to be taken into consideration. But as of right now, that is still on the drawing board, but that's on the Maryland Park and Planning as measures uh to combat the mental health and wellness in our communities and actually get citizens back interfacing with each other, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. There anyone else that I have not seen any hands?
Hello, good evening.
Hello, is this Miss Hunter?
Hi, this is, yes, it is Miss Hunter and um I had attempted to join the meeting via the Zoom link three times and all three times I was waiting and then it's like I just got disconnected. So I actually had to dial in. Um, so I don't know who was controlling that, but um, or if it was just a technical issue, but I did want to make note of that because this wasn't the first time that occurred. Um, I wanted to ask a question regarding the uh new chime carryout that's up near in the shopping center where the A one store is, um. You know, just by driving by, I noticed it's been closed for some time. So um, I've been asked a couple of times by people, you know, hey, do you know why it's closed? Or what happened? I'm like, no, I don't. Um, then also when we talk about intersections where they, we need stop signs or we need to look at. The intersection of Johnson Avenue and Glen Arden Parkway in Ward One. Is in a tragedy waiting to happen. There are so many cars that fly through that four way and it is a four way stop sign. But I would say seventy five percent of the people that come through there do not respect the stop sign. And when I say they fly through it, they blow through it. We have kids that are crossing. We have elderly, anybody that's going through that intersection and it's just like, what are we waiting for? It's, it's tragedy waiting to happen at that intersection. Um, I also mentioned that there was a car flying, going at least forty miles an hour coming up a cul-de-sac off of Johnson Avenue. And I know where the car is. I know where they reside. And I was told to request a speed bump on the street. So I guess to kind of slow people down, but we really got to do something, uh, um, bring some attention to uh, awareness to people respecting the speed limit around here. This is a residential area. And you know, as we get newer residents over here, it seems like, oh, it's all fun and well to even burn circles in the middle of the street at night and fly up and down the streets and they think, you know, it's cool, it's fun until someone gets hurt, injured or worth killed. Um, so those are some concerns that I had and I heard the mayor did mention about the sidewalks. Um, so I'm glad that that's still on the radar. I'm looking forward to having our sidewalk repaired. Um. And as far as the garden, um, back to the mayor, are you talking about like a vegetable garden? Um, I, I, I kind of caught the tail end of, are you talking about like a community garden where we have um, actual vegetables and stuff we're growing or I thought I heard you mention something about roses or something. Maybe I didn't hear you correctly. But I just want to clarify on that because honestly, I think it's a good thing. Um, we can have carryouts. Why can't we have gardens? You know, we need to get to teaching our kids and families, you know, just eat healthy, eat food grown from, grown from the ground. And, you know, I hope the carryout was closed and gone for good and we could get something else in there that's a better, healthier choice for the citizens of Glen Arden. But that's all I have and thank you for your time.
I'm out there. I'll let this uh Mayor Cross um.
Thank you, uh, Miss Hunter for your inquiry. That was rodent, not roses. Uh, so rodent problem. So we would have to come up with a measure to protect it from the rodents, but it is a community garden. So uh, as we know, that the area there, um, particularly from Bright Seat Road over is really kind of a food desert. Uh, so this community garden would actually have the capacity to be serviced by the citizens and would, if we protect it in such a way in like a greenhouse capacity, produce fresh fruits uh throughout and vegetables throughout the year. So this is uh on the planning and if you would like to be involved in that discussion, when that plan happens, I would love to have citizens involved. Uh, so that you can actually uh meet with Maryland Park Planning, who is actually planning to do this. I think that's a good thing to have citizens, more citizens involved with it. Uh, that way, you know, it will be something for the community overall and you have your voice in how it's actually put together. So if, if that's something that interests you, we'd love to have you on the team, ma'am. But it is a community garden.
Okay. Thank you. Any other citizens comments? Okay, I want to make everybody aware of the uh public hearing that is for tomorrow. Uh, and Miss Hunter, I apologize uh that you had to wait. It looks like it was a technical issue. Um. And so we'll try to get that fixed and the uh also the, the alert that somebody has joined the, the meeting. That is the, the sound, the beeping sound that you may hear. So we'll look into maybe, maybe uh quieting that sound. Uh. On the backend. Uh. Is your hand raised, Michelle?
Excuse me. Yes, I wanted to make a comment about the uh sidewalks. I have been for the last couple of days sitting down, going through the bid, bids that were done for the sidewalks. And it looks to me that uh the scope of work is different for. Uh, I know two of them, the scope of work is different. That's why the, the, because I was trying to figure out why the, the estimates were three different prices. And I'm looking at the scope of work for all three of the uh bids that were presented and the scope of work is different for two of those. Uh, I, I would ask the administration to look at those um bids again and make sure, because I want to see this project done because citizens have been asking for uh the ward three streets to be re, the do paving on that. The money's already in the budget to do that. That just needs to go forward. But the, the sidewalk issue, citizens want to see tangible work that the city is doing in order to improve the community. And they're, they're wanting to do that, the sidewalk. Now, like I said, I'm looking at uh doing an analysis on this, uh, the bids and it looks like the scope of work is different on all three. That's why we got different prices. Now, the one lowest bid that was presented by the administration, I could possibly go along with. That way we could get started and see what, what gets missed uh in the uh process. Uh, but those bids are different because the scope of work on each of them are different. Thank you.
And Mister Herring, I know that you had, oh, you'll mute yourself, so that you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to, oh, if Miss Jones is finished, um, yeah, I just wanted to just mention to everybody that we're having a shred day coming up on April ninth. And we'll also have um the green drop truck there to pick up, you know, household items that people want to donate. So I just wanted to get that out there. All right, thanks.
Hey, Mister Herring, uh, and I believe you had a question as it relates to the um. The uh bids for sidewalks as well. All your questions answered?
Uh, yeah, but it's still too high. I mean, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I mean, because I really didn't get any answers to my questions. They added the ADA compliant uh curb cuts, but that's still not answering the question of why those bids, prices are so much different, are so different. And Ms. Jones is doing an analysis, so we see why the scope isn't, isn't the same for all three of them, or for two of them. You know, and that's the issue when you put in our bids and the scope's a difference, you're not, you're not, you're not being fair across the board when you're asking for responses on how much it's gonna cost, so. We need to look at as a council to decide what, has everything been gone up, has gone up properly, and has the scope of work gone out fairly to all bidders? So that they can actually give a fair bid across, because, I mean, the price sounds, on that one is just so astronomically high compared to the other ones.
Okay. And at the same time, Mayor Cross, you could look into it, because I know this is an important piece that needs to get done. And I don't wanna just keep on going month to month of going back and forth, so if we could, you know, look into that, please, and so we can try to have that in, and voted on as soon as possible.
We'll take care of it tomorrow, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, with that, the time is nine oh one. Again, legislation tomorrow, feel free to join a public hearing and, and let your voice be heard. Time is nine oh one. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.